To excuse those not present.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to excuse those commissioners not present. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have been submitted a copy of the minutes from the previous meetings. Are there any corrections or additions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
I would say, item seven and eight, the last line, Mr. Chambers made a motion to postpone both of the requests until further notice from the city attorney. It does not say that we approved that, and I ask that we amend it to say that the planning commission approved. It can be a stenographer's, I don't think it needs to be voted on, just everyone agrees that we need to agree that we approved that postponement.
Did you get that, Mr. Regus? Do we need to vote on that?
It wouldn't hurt, but the other thing is, is I remember it was specific that it was going to be postponed until this month. It says until further notice, but you just made me think about that, that it was pretty clear y'all were, it was explicit that it was going to be this month. I don't know if that's something-
I'm happy with that also.
Okay, yeah, just to be safe, I would go ahead and vote on it.
So I'm going to read requested, further notice, I mean, excuse me, postpone both the requests until next month, and then just, planning commission approved.
Okay, motion on that, second? Second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We also have with us today-
Mr. Chairman, was that a vote on the amendment or vote on the minutes?
There's a vote on the approval of the minutes as amended.
Got it, thank you.
We have with us today, our alderman, Debbie Ross is here with us today, and Mr. Shannon Clark is with the city clerk's office, and Jerry Robinson with the fire department, so we're glad that y'all are with us today. If you have your cell phones, please turn those off, speak into the microphone if you come before the commission to speak, and also today, we're running on a tight time schedule. The city council has this room reserved for five o'clock, so today we are limiting discussions to three minutes each, so if you would, please remember that. So we have amended, we have approved the minutes under the administrative. Mr. Spencer?
For, got two items. In front of you, there should be an updated staff report for item number two, public hearing, conditional use 2019-19, and it's updated because we received a traffic study after we mailed this out to you. So if you toss the one away that's in your package and replace it with the one you have there, it's, we've updated one. And the second item is, I'm asking to make an amendment to your bylaws to allow phone, to allow telephone conferencing, to allow someone from home to make a quorum. And so, would ask, if we can get a vote on that, and we'll amend that, and I think, I've heard that someone there wants to make an amendment to that, so-
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir, I approve of the proposed amendment to the bylaws, and I'd like to add them, item three, the maximum of one commissioner can participate via phone conference at each meeting.
Is that in form of a motion?
That's in form of a motion to amend.
Second, Ms. Pulasko?
Okay, you want it, you don't want more than one on the phone?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're gonna have, as written, you could have the chairman here and eight people participating by phone, as written. Current technology is limited to one-
I just wonder if limiting one is a smart thing, but I guess we can always come back.
Can always come back, and current technology limits it to one.
Any comments, many commissioners on this? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you. We'll move right into our development review committee meeting. Mr. Chambers?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. The development review committee met and considered item SD 2019-41 North Shore Business Park, block 10, lot 11, preliminary plat and site plan review of an office building at 5328 North Shore Cove. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Next item-
Excuse me, Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
We have also, Alderwoman Beth White has come in and joined us. Welcome, we're glad to have you today. Sorry, Mr. Chambers, go ahead.
Not a problem. SD 2019-42 Seahawk Transportation Edition, lot one, site plan review of a warehouse at 2213 Central Airport Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through eight and subsections, and development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item C is SD 2019-43 Argenta Block 17 Lot AR, replat and site plan review of a restaurant with a drive-through at 418 East Broadway. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11, and this is the item Mr. Spencer referred to as an addition to your packet that you received, and there is an addition to this list on item 12, that the applicant shall provide a copy of the council ordinance waiving the four-foot side yard landscape strip, and as amended, the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many of the commissioners? All in favor, Mr. Banks?
I want to say this is the one that I talked to city engineer Chris Wilburn, but I'm not sure, did he get his concerns addressed? I had to send him some plans or something?
So we're, we can only require a right-of-way dedication that's in the master street plan, and the highway department's requiring more. So what we're doing is not allowing them to build anything in that extra area, and then you guys would still need to address about, or you guys, the highway department would still, sorry, would still need to address on how to purchase that property or get the right-of-way, but we're not going to allow them to develop into it.
Do they need that additional part that's over on the state's right-of-way?
Well, they're gonna say, yes, they need it, but they, we've got a design right now that does not encroach into that.
Encroach, okay, okay, all right.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, Mr. Banks, just a point of information, the Rock Region Metro attended our meeting and requested that we require an extension of the gore point for the on-ramp, so that the curb went past the exit for the Starbucks, to keep cars from going 90 degrees onto the on-ramp, and we told them that we couldn't control that, but I thought I would communicate that to you, so if you have input in the plans, you might see that there's some sort of physical barrier, not just paint, to keep persons from driving straight out of the out exit and across two lanes of traffic and into the on-ramp.
Okay, I know what you're talking about, okay.
I've gotten nearly T-bone twice there, so-
Right, I know exactly what you're saying.
Is that something that your department would look at?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to pass that information on.
Okay.
And I said, I think, you seconded it?
I did.
Okay, so that's where we are.
Okay, any other comments on this application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Next item is SD 2019-44 George W. Heilmann Subdivision, lot 2A and 2B, replat and site plan review of a Dollar General at 6700 MacArthur Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Mr. White?
One thing I'm asking, I think it's a dollar store that's on MacArthur, is, is MacArthur, the, when they come in on their, with their 18-wheelers, has that been addressed, that they don't block the highway? We ran into that problem, if you remember, it's the one down by the old Mexico Cachita place. That road's wrong, I'm sorry, it's in MacArthur. Is there any rest in this?
City engineering looked at the plan, I can only imagine they did look at that, and if they were blocking a highway, they'd be blocking a state highway this time.
Right.
So I would think that that'd be something the city engineering would be careful about. You know, Sean?
Um, we would not address that during our review, the, where's the engineer? Have, did you, yeah, let him speak. I'm pretty sure they did, but I'll-
Give us your name for the record, please.
Marcus McNeese, I'm with Bartlett Architecture. We designed the truck, the truck pulls in off the highway and backs in off the parking lot, not off the highway, so-
Okay, thank you.
Banks?
What about, what about parking adjacent to the highway? We've had some concerns up and down MacArthur, where we have a number of businesses that are encroaching the state's right-of-way.
Yeah.
Their parking, and so are you putting a curb or something to delineate how far they can park close to the road on their front face?
Yeah, there's gonna be curb along the, between us and the highway, and we're off, can't remember exactly, I think it's like, well, over 15 foot off the right-of-way with that, and then the street's another 30 foot out from that.
Okay.
So there's probably at least 50 foot, probably between the road and where our parking lot would, or parking spaces that aligns the road is.
All right, how's that?
Thank you. Any other comments on the application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Last item is item ESD 2019-45, the breeze at Rockwater, I think-
That has been postponed.
Okay, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. We'll move right into our public hearing. First case today is case number, conditional use number 2019-18, to allow a contractor's office with outdoor storage and equipment parking in a C4 zone located at 3100 East Broadway in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here? Please come up and give us your name for the record, please.
Nick Johnson.
And what would you be storing outside?
Just equipment, trailers, and mostly trailers, and pickups inside the gate fenced area.
So there would be no product outside?
Correct.
Any opposition or anything on this? Any comments?
No phone calls.
Okay. Any comments from commissioners, Mr. White, or Mr. Chambers, I'm sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I recall, your business is emergency, emergency services business?
Yes, sir, as met, emergency response.
As met, emergency response.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, anyone in the audience? Any comments, many commissioners? All in favor, please call the roll.
White?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Pulasko?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Banks? Phillips?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
I abstain. Thank you. If you get with Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is conditional use number, case number 2019-19, to allow a restaurant with a drive-through in a C6 zone located at 418 East Broadway. Is the applicant here? Give us your name for the record.
Yes, Eric Holloway with Holloway Engineering.
Okay, this is what we had a design review committee look a while ago on our other case. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments, many commissioners? Mr. Foster?
Has the, has the staff since received this traffic study, have any comments on that?
We received it about a week ago after we printed this, and there should be a new write-up in front of you. City engineer's office was fine, was, accepted it and agreed with everything in it.
Okay, well, I looked at it myself, and, you know, Peters does a very good job. I thought it was very good.
Yeah, the city engineer agreed, it was done well.
Mr. White? Any other comments on the application? Please call the roll.
Banks? Chambers?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Pulasko?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes.
On the Cypress side, yes, sir.
So folks were pulling out of the gas station at a high speed to get up onto the ramp and hit a bus, and then came close a couple other times. So that was their concern, was that they wanted to stop people from making that quick right turn onto the ramp.
Okay, on the, on the case number three, to allow a truck and trailer rental-
We have to vote on-
On the application? Any other comments on the application? Please call the roll. Which, number three?
No, we haven't discussed number three. Number two, to allow a restaurant and drive-through.
I thought we just voted on that.
Just voted on that.
Yeah, we just voted-
We're on number three.
Yeah, that's what I was after the vote.
We're fine. I got, I got confused.
Pulasko?
We didn't discuss this one.
What's this?
Did we?
Well, I asked for any comments-
Oh, I'm sorry.
To allow a truck and trailer rental business in a C3 at 20-
Folks were leaving and couldn't hear, but the applicant is here, the applicant is here.
Would the applicant, please, come up? Give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Malcolm Keener, created Crown Beauty Barber Salon, 2010 Pike Avenue, North Little Rock.
And I'm Carolyn Keener.
Have you had any calls or opposition on this, Mr. Spencer?
This came to our attention from code enforcement, so they had operated this business without getting a business license and checking with us, and so we were receiving calls at the beginning, multiple calls about them operating a truck business without the proper paperwork.
Mr. White?
What, what business is there now?
It's a beauty, beauty and barber salon.
Can those go hand in hand?
Uh, well, it's a conditional use, so, or a special use, so we're having to add conditions. The issue is that there's 12 barber chairs, or chairs inside, so there could be 12 employees and 12 customers, so that'd be 24 cars, and then he wants to add 10 U-Haul trucks all on this lot here, so the lot's not big enough to do all that in one, on this piece of property. So that's the issue we're having.
You're assuming that they're gonna continue the businesses there in addition to the-
That's what he told the-
Okay. I just want to make, make sure everybody knew that.
May I speak on that behalf? In regards to what the chairman, the gentleman saying, Spencer is saying, there has never been an issue with parking in regards to what we're doing with the U-Haul trailers and the business of stylists and barbers. For one thing, we have not had that many stylists and barbers in our location at any given time to surmount such parking. If that was the case in this regards, then something would be eliminated, and it would not be the beauty supply business, it would probably be the U-Haul business, with all due respect to the business itself. But until that happens, if that happens, then then that's what we're requiring, asking you all to allow us to utilize this space for the U-Haul business, because again, at this point, we only have like about three people, four people in our salon doing hair.
Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Mr. Spencer, it sounds like a case of an equation, okay? If you have four chairs, you have this number of vehicles required, but if you have this many chairs, you have that number of vehicles required, and the difference of the carrying capacity of the lot is how many U-Hauls you can have. Is that about right?
Correct.
Okay, so it sounds to me, if the applicant wants to limit the number of chairs they have, then they could accommodate a certain number of U-Haul vehicles. Is that correct? They have 12 chairs, and you're counting those 12 chairs even though they're not occupied or used or rented, or however they're parsed out, but if he wants to say, well, I'm only going to use six of these chairs, well, then his parking requirement goes down and his U-Haul capacity goes up.
Correct, but we, we got a plan for the, we're planning for the worst case, so the, you know, the-
I know, I know, but-
So that's what we're here to do.
So I guess my question is, is if the applicant wants to limit, state for the record, that his conditional use is for six chairs, and, and of course, whatever, I don't know what the calculation would be for how many trucks he could have, then that would be a way to get to or toward an approval, as opposed to saying 12 chairs, 24 cars, you have 26 spaces, you can have two U-Haul vehicles. Is that-
That's the way we, we came up with our numbers there.
Do y'all understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So if you're only, if you're only using, on average, three or four or five chairs,
I'm not sure how we would enforce-
Put a bag over them and say, we only have these four chairs? I'm trying to get to happiness here, is what I'm trying to do.
Well, at any given time, there's, because those operators are self-employed, at any given time, there may be one, one there, there may be two there, there may be none there, you know, so it's kind of a come and go type thing, as to where, all the operators are never there probably at the same time, all the time. Yes, sir.
Mr. Spencer?
On, I'm not sure how we would enforce that, so, you know, we're stuck with chairs and square footage, and so I'm not sure how anybody from the city would go in and daily check or monthly check how many people are using the chairs at that point in time.
That's, that's my point, okay, and I'm trying to figure out, I mean, they could take the 12 chairs and wrap six of them in, in plastic wrap, you know, and say, these six chairs are not being used. And obviously, if they unwrapped them and used them and expanded their business while still keeping 12 U-Haul trucks and parking them on the street and everything like this, or crowding the lot, it would be obvious. I, I don't know how to make the applicant happy and the city's equation happy, is what I'm trying to get to.
In regards to the U-Haul, our aerial manager is Steven, Steven's last name?
Oh, Broman.
Steven Broman, and, and if we were to contact him at any given time and say, Steve, we need to take these trailers off our lot, we need five or six of them removed right now, he would come within that week and remove five or six trailers, because again, the U-Haul business is not, it's not a, regardless of what we're doing, it's not a profitable business. We're just trying to be there for the, for the sake of the community, that's there because there was a U-Haul business that closed on Camp Robinson, so therefore, we're there basically for, to help the community that, that's in that area, if they needed to rent a trailer or a truck, and, and that's pretty much where we're at. Yes, sir.
Mr. Foster?
No, I can understand us having this argument if this is a new facility, he had a piece of property and he's going to divide, you know, you know, lay out and design a parking lot to facilitate his business there, but he's, it's not that situation. What we have is, is an existing business, existing piece of property that has a certain size to it, only accommodates certain sized building and so many parking spaces. I think we ought to leave it up to the applicant to determine how he wants to use those, and once he uses them, however he wants to use them, he can store, you know, as many U-Hauls out there as wants to, but he's not gonna have any parking for his customers, so he's not gonna have a business there. I don't know why we can't just let him-
Part of our job is, we've got to protect the neighbors, so if that, if that lot is all full of U-Hauls, then the barber people are parking on the neighbor's property, so we've got to somehow enforce, you know, where the customers park, and that's why we have parking requirements.
Well, I understand that, but I think in this situation, I think he's saying he's going to be flexible of how he operates there with his, I don't know-
But we're just stating what the ordinance says, so-
Mr. Spencer?
Question, Mr. King.
Chairman Spencer, in regards to-
Excuse me?
I'm sorry?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
How long have you been operating before the code people come to see you?
I've been operating since 1996.
At this location?
At that location.
With the U-Hauls?
Without the U-Haul, not, the U-Haul's been only about, U-Haul's been about since April, but I've been operating at Beauty Salon there since 1996.
So you've been there about four months-
Yes, sir.
With the U-Haul, with your beauty shop?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
If you had any problems?
No problems.
Have you had any complaints from neighbors calling in?
Not, I mean, the complaint is that there's U-Hauls there, not, they didn't specify what, if people were parking on their property, but it was from U-Hauls.
Okay. Banks?
Yes, I would just only give one fair warning. If I'm looking at the, that aerial photo correctly, there is a U-Haul parked outside of the property boundaries, which means that it would be on the state highway right-of-way, so I would just warn you that you could get contacted by the state department and tell you to move that one trailer back over on your property, so just be aware that there is a, this one up against the corner could be a partial encroachment onto the, off your property, onto the state property, and I'm not sure where the boundaries are.
Meaning the alleyway that's going back?
No, we talking about the very first one.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the state right-of-way is along there, right there where that-
Oh, okay.
Up against this small U-Haul trailer?
Oh, yes, sir.
It could be encroaching the state right-of-way, so you could be asked to move it back further on your property. That could happen, just be aware that that could happen.
Yes, understandable.
That's all.
Understandable.
But I have no problem with the-
Yes, sir.
Mr. White?
This is a strange question, but where are you gonna put the two trees? Because it looks like it's all concrete.
Well, that's another thing that we were here to ask in regards to the tree planting, is for that to be waived. Again, I've been there since 1996, I've never heard of that before until now, and there are properties that are surrounding me that does not have a tree planting ordinance that I can see, and one, including the one next door to me, so I would ask that, for that particular ordinance to be waived.
You could ask that, but it would have to be a request to go to the city council. We don't have the authority to waive that, only the city council does.
Yes, sir.
But you can go to the city council and ask for it to be waived.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, sir, I'm attempting to see, I'd like to amend item five, to say that the conditions are that the, the conditional use permits, I'm gonna say six barber chairs and six trucks. Just cut out item five and say, allow six barber chairs and six trucks. That should fit within the parking you've got on the property. It should fit within what you're telling me is your average use, and that way you can operate, and unless you violate this egregiously, I don't know, I don't, I think you'll be within the parameters of what we're wanting to see.
Yes, sir.
About one second there?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that item number five be amended to six barber shop, beauty shop chairs and five trailers.
Six.
Or six trailers.
Six, U-Haul vehicles.
Discussion, Mr. White?
Here's, here's my problem, I'm gonna have to go with what Sean said. This is gonna be absolutely impossible unless they get complaints to, to regulate.
That's why everything else is regulated, Mr. White.
Well, that's right, but, but I would like to do it a different way. How, how many chairs do you have?
Right now, I have twelve spaces for stylists.
And how many stylists do you have?
Four.
Four. Here's what I would recommend. I don't care how many chairs he's got in there, because he's probably not going to fill all twelve. And if he fills all twelve, he doesn't have parking that's going to hurt his business, he's going to get rid of the U-Hauls anyway. So what I would rather see is, I keep looking at that big old truck in the very back, and that's, to me, that's eyesore. So I would like to limit it to, the way I would do it is, one truck like he's got and five trailers, which means six right there, that's what he has room for. And as far as regulating the chairs, I don't see any reason to regulate the chairs. I think he's going to regulate it himself.
Most definitely.
Because if he gets twelve, you're not making enough on the U-Haul, you'd rather have twelve chairs occupied.
Most definitely.
Okay. I agree with your amendment.
Okay.
I do too.
Okay.
Do we need to amend the amendment?
No, no.
This is. No, we didn't vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chambers?
I'm just going to ask, would they be acceptable to that amended change in that agreement?
Now, the trucks are the ones that makes us the money more than the trailers.
Right, but you made the comment that you're one call away from getting stuff in or stuff out. So if you rent that big truck and someone comes in to rent a truck, it's real easy to call and get another truck sent over there real quick.
No, let me, let's reemphasize something with the U-Haul business. We are considered a U-Haul dealer.
Dealer, not a center.
Those, the one on Cypress is considered a U-Haul center. That's all they do is U-Haul business. U-Haul dealers, which is what we are, is basically a business that already exists that now carries U-Hauls on their property. We're more or less a steward for what U-Haul does to a degree. But U-Haul trucks is something that very seldom stay on the lot because people are needing more trucks than our trailers. That's why we, that's why we asking our aerial manager to come remove some of our trailers because they don't move as much. But the trucks is something that moves literally every day. If we have a truck on our lot, one, two, even three, most of those, most of the time, those trucks are moving somewhere, whether it's in a city or out of the state. And if they move out of the state, we don't get those trucks back. It's up to the centers or the U-Haul corporate to actually send us another truck, and that's at their discretion as well.
But you only have one truck on the lot right now.
Exactly. But that truck may or may not be there.
The only way I'm going to vote on this if we, you know, and I'll change, you know, which I haven't really made yet, you know, I can change it to two trucks and four, but I'm not going over two major trucks in a residential area on that lot. That's the only way I'll vote for it, is if we limit it to two major trucks. And again, I'm not talking about pickup trucks, I'm talking about that size truck.
Okay, that's what I'm going to say. The trucks, we have ten footers, fifteen footers.
What is that one right there?
Twenty footers and a twenty-six footer. That could be a twenty-six footer. But now the ten footer and the fifteen footer and the twenty footer can be parked the same way the trailers are. The twenty-six footer is the only one that we kind of do at a different angle because it's longer. But we have parking in the back of the salon that sometimes we park our trucks back there because we know that it's not enough space sometimes in the front because we have so many trailers. That's why we try to get the trailers out and get the trucks in. Because again, the trucks are the ones that make the money. The trailers, it just depends.
So you're asking that you be allowed trucks or trailers, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
If his amendment passed, or you can go ahead with your application that you have now. If you don't want to agree to changing the amendment, Mr. White?
Let me put it this way then. And you have room in the back?
Yes.
And you rent the twenty footers and the eighteen footers? Is that your big business?
Probably more so the twenty-two.
So here's.
The ten, fifteen, the ten, fifteen and the twenties are usually a little bit more popular than the twenty-six.
And those get back in and?
And add the trailer, yes, sir.
So here's my motion amendment. I'm going to amend this on number five to six total rental trailers, our trucks on site, is what I'm going to amend it to. That way we're being fair, we took away four from you. You've already said if the other business takes off, you're going to eliminate this anyway. So that's my motion.
That's pretty much it.
Okay, we, so you're withdrawing yours in favor of this?
Just to be clear, I and Charlie withdrawing our initial motion.
So please give us the written motion that we're going to be, amendment that we're going to be voting on. I'm sorry?
Not with the chairs.
Okay.
A second.
Motion made, seconded.
Quick question, what are we voting on again? I want to make sure that I'm.
It's about to read it.
We're fixing to read it right now.
Okay.
Well, may have to clean it up a little, but it's to remove a number, or replace a number five on the list with allow six U-Haul vehicles on the property at one time. And the property is what's in the yellow. So it's not the alley, it's not that piece of property in the back, and it's not in the right-of-way up on the front. It's what's in that square.
Yes.
Flip back to, before we carry on with that issue you just talked about, flip back to the picture. It appears to me that big truck is well beyond the back of that building, and that's about where the back property line is, the east property line. Is that big truck on your property or in that parking lot just behind you?
It's on our property.
It's on our property.
Yeah, it's just inside the alley.
Look at the dumpster.
Yes, about a dumpster. If you look at the dumpster, the dumpster is kind of.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, y'all understand what the amendment is?
In regards to six and six, or just six trailers, six trucks?
Six period.
Six trailers?
Six periods.
It's periods.
Doesn't matter if it's six trailers or six trucks, it's just six.
You work with that?
I mean, chairs.
Chairs would not be affected.
Yeah, the chairs are not affecting.
Okay. We can work with that.
Okay. Okay, any comments?
Would you all be willing to do eight?
No. I won't.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Any other comments from any commissioners? Old Woman Ross, yes, ma'am. Excuse, let her come, please.
You know, the outcome of this will go on to the council, but I just, you know, sometimes people, they don't want to call, planning that they'll call, you know, a council member on this. And I did have a conversation with some property owners down there, and their concern is the...
May I ask who we're speaking with here?
Debbie Ross, council member. And some of their concerns is the safety issue of the U-Hauls pulling in and out, you know, that's a very busy area down there. One of the other issues is, it's probably been two or three years ago, and I don't know how this equates, but there was an individual down there with a business, they were wanting to have sell four or five cars parked out in front of their business to have those, and we denied that. And so they were wanting to know how does that equate to this business of renting U-Hauls as opposed to having four or five cars out in front? This is just information I wanted to give y'all. And the other is to make sure that it stays on that property, because I understand that at one time there may have been some on some other property out there. So I just want to provide y'all with that information that some people do not want to necessarily, you know, they want to be good neighbors, but they also want to keep that area intact.
Thank you. And Mr. Foster did reiterate that everything would have to be kept within that yellow line?
Yes, sir.
And obviously, there could be no used cars sold from this lot.
Never have been. Yeah, I don't know where that come from, but never have been.
Okay. On the application, please, please call the roll. On the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, aye?
Aye.
Okay, on the application as amended, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Your application did pass with that amendment. See Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what we need to do next.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Okay, number four, rezoned case number twenty nineteen, twenty-one and twenty-two rezoned, the PUD has been postponed. We'll move into the next item on our agenda is rezoned case number twenty nineteen dash nineteen, the change from a TND to a C4 at sixteen hundred Rockwater Boulevard. I'd like for our city attorney, Mr. Mosley, to comment on this for us. Bring us up to date, please.
Well, if you'll recall last month, counsel for a property owner who is involved in litigation regarding one of these two properties and an easement that's close to them, not really the property, but an easement, came in and objected and said, wait, this case is being handled in the courts, or not this, the change from TND to C4, but there's something going on in the courts, this could adversely affect it. This is the first I had heard of it, that day was the first I'd heard of it. I wanted to do some research on the legalities, not the legalities, but really whether someone has a property right in a particular zoning classification. And as to these facts, no matter what, how a court rules on this, it's my opinion that there is not a protectable property interest in a particular zoning classifications for a number of reasons based on the law that I looked at. But also, you have a rational basis to change these back because TND can't, the property that's there doesn't comply with a criteria for TND in any event because it has to be at least forty acres. And so there's a rational basis there. And so my request was that you hold off for a month, I'm not requesting that you do that now.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any other comments from commissioners? On the application, please call the roll. Mr. Spencer, when we vote on this, we will be removing it from a TND back to a C4, is that correct?
Correct, which what it was originally before we zoned it to TND.
That's correct. Any comments from commissioners?
I thought you said we should hold this.
No, we had it last month.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That's fine, Commissioner White, sorry. I went here last, I'm sorry, I apologize.
On the application, please call the roll.
Banks?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to item number six, rezoned case number twenty nineteen dash twenty, to move from a TND back to an R4 and conservation property along Rockwater Boulevard. This was passed from last month to this month. Again, Mr. Mosley?
Same issue, really, only one of these really was in proximity, close proximity to the easement that's subject to that lawsuit. The only thing I'll say in addition is this, nothing prevents whomever owns these properties from coming back and seeking a rezoning later. So you're not, I don't think you're adversely affecting anyone here, okay?
Thank you. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Chambers?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?